Going to call to meet the budget, meet the order. We need the call to order, right?
Commissioner Grogan?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Fersen?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Thank you. All right, this is an advertised public hearing to adopt the final millage rate and finalize the budget for the city of Ocoee. The city commission has previously approved a tentative millage rate of 5.8038 mills, which represents a 6.77 increase in millage over the rollback rate of 5.4357 mills. The adopted tentative millage rate is the maximum millage rate, which may be adopted by the city commission at the final budget public hearing tonight. I now ask that the Director of Finance to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed operating budgets for the city of Ocoee for fiscal year 18 total $69,590,910. The proposed general fund budget is $47,648,485. Ad valorem taxes are being assessed to provide funding for operational expenses, capital purchases, debt service payments, salaries necessary to provide municipal services. The commission has adopted a millage rate for fiscal year 18 to 5.8038 mills. This rate is higher than the rollback rate of 5.4357, which represents a millage rate increase of 6.77 percent. The tentative millage rate generates about $775,858 more in revenue than the rollback rate. Of this amount, $400,000 is undesigned and has been placed in the contingency account. The adoption of the 5.8038 mills requires only a majority vote of the commission. Items that were discussed have taken no action in the tentative budget hearing are itemized in the unfunded list for your consideration. Also included are some revised budget pledges and also a copy of the CIP that required minor informational correction or minor correction for mathematical errors. The CIP bond-funded projects will return to the commission later in October to revisit the funding and amend allocations as needed. That concludes my presentation.
All righty. I will now open this meeting for any members of the general public to speak or ask questions. If any members of the general public wish to speak or ask questions and have not already filled out a speaker form, please fill out a speaker form and present it to the City Clerk for private speaking. All right, it's open for the public. If anybody in the public wants to make a comment, now's the time. All right. Step up.
First want to take a second to say thank you very much. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys. I try not to make every single meeting or feed any horse to death in any way, shape, or form, so to speak, but I think when it comes down to the finances of our community and how they're being used and the way that the importance is of them, you know, I feel it's important to speak. So, I'm going to touch base on just a few things. I'm not going to get into the millage rate, although it's clear under the Orange County property appraiser rixing that you can look and see where we rate as far as what millage rate we have compared to the cities around us, whether it be to the east, to the south, or all the way to Belle Isle. So, I don't need to talk about that. That's all for public to look up. I do want to take a brief second to touch on three things. And I did not get a chance to make the August 10 budget workshop, and next year I'll do my diligence to make sure that I find out any of that kind of information maybe next year at that, so I don't waste any time here, okay? I believe the 14th workshop was canceled though. So, the first concern I have is something I was in the same building last year, and Mr. Grogan brought up the research he had done in regards to doing an audit of our independent, each independent branch within the city, not a financial audit of its overall, but just to kind of see where each individual, you know, minutes, you know, where we stood. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous and I'm on the time thing. And somehow that we allocated $60,000, it was passed by Mr. Grogan, it was unanimous, and it wasn't put into place this year. I was told last meeting that it was because we just didn't have enough money. That's all for you guys to decide and so on and so forth, but I think it's important that if we're putting that kind of stuff forward and it's unanimously being passed, that we should try to uphold it. I think when you have a community that's never had this particular type of audit ever done in its existence, it would be important going forth with the growth that we have and the money that we spend to do so. I think it makes common sense. I also think it should be done maybe every three to five years, you know, just to kind of keep things transparent. Number two, I'd like to touch base yet again about the Founder's Day. I know this is a free event, Mary, that you've brought up on a couple occasions, and I understand that, but again, it comes down to financing of it. I'm sure that it puts a burden on our fire department or police department, and I understand it has its own individual budget, but looking through the budget here, there's not an allocated department, or maybe I don't understand, it may be 001, where the revenue of the Founder's Day is broke down so that we know specifically what it's costing. Me, you guys may know that, but I personally don't, or if I can find it, what it's costing and then what we're getting in revenue back. I'm not saying it has to be a positive or a negative, and I'm not saying I don't want to do it, I just think that that's a large cost to us citizens, and I think it should be transparent that we see what it is. That's it on that. I also think that, you know, when it comes to the Parks and Rec Department, you know, we have a lot of programs that represent Ocoee here in our behalf, and I think those are important programs. I love every one of them, and I love our Parks and Rec Departments, and don't take this wrong, but I also believe that these particular programs should be held to a certain standard, which is to be a not-for-profit or a nonprofit organization. I believe that they should actually contribute 10% of their funds to the Parks and Rec Department to help cover some of the, and offset some of the costs that had the burden on the community. I know for a fact that the, you know, that they make six figures and above, and I think that if they could give $10,000 or $15,000 to our municipality to help with the cost, that's not too much of a burden to ask of them. I know every other municipality, because I've checked, does not fund these programs. They have to independently pay for themselves. So, you know, that's a good thing that we have, don't misunderstand, you know, understand where I'm coming from on that. And I don't think 10% of whatever their income is is too much either. And last but not least, one thing I want to touch base on, and we all obviously know that over the last three to four years, we've had huge healthcare cost increases. We have a great program within the city of Ocoee where we pay for co-pays and we pay for deductibles, and it's built into the taxpayers' expense. I don't say that that's not a good thing, but at the same time, I shouldn't see people running around smoking cigarettes and maybe be unhealthy at the same time that some people may not be able to afford insurance. So, you know, maybe merit-based would be something to look at going forward, you know, hey, if we're, you know, having regular checkups and, and, you know, we're not part of the, you know, nicotine or things that could create an additional long-term expense or burden on the taxpayer, I don't think it's too far to ask to have us be healthy, and maybe, I don't, that's already in place, so, but I think if it's not, it's something that we should do, because that's only going to increase the cost of that program. So, again, like I said, I appreciate your time. Those are just three things that I think going forward, we should think about more clearly. I think that we as taxpayers fund a heavy burden in Ocoee, which I'm not saying that we shouldn't, and I think every dollar counts, and that's it. I appreciate it.
All right, does anybody want to make any comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This probably is for Rob. Do we, you just brought something up, Chris, that made me think about this. Do we have a no-smoking policy within the vehicles, the city vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. Is the Beach Center a no-smoking facility? Do we have any no-smoking facilities? I know like the hospital's a no-smoking facility, I'm probably hitting the subject that may, not everyone wants to hear, but I know like the hospital's a non-smoking facility, but, I mean, Chris, you just brought that up, and it just kind of made me think about that with our vehicles and our buildings. Do we have any no-smoking buildings?
All the buildings inside by state law are non-smoking buildings.
Right, I mean...
I'm talking more like equipment. She's right, it's not necessarily a building per se, when she brings up maybe a vehicle or something, but, and I'm not here to pinpoint any of those things. My bigger overall concern would be the health factor that is negatively impacted by partaking in those things and that as taxpayers have to pay the co-pays and deductibles for those individuals. And people who are better, you know, healthy is, you know, they deserve that help because they're making a contribution, but to go out and not worry about that health-wise and then just have the taxpayers pay up their deductibles, that can be expensive and co-pays, because, you know, in my opinion, it should be looked at. And they shouldn't be smoking in, on, in, or around a city vehicle, in my opinion.
Well, that's what I was getting at at that point. The vehicles are all non-smoking, correct? Okay.
What about, okay, on the Recreation Department, you were talking about self-funding on some of the things, what were you talking about?
Well, we have a great, we have a great system in Ocoee, okay? I mean, because I am involved with many of these volunteer organizations in different capacities, and not only in our municipality, but in other ones around, so I have a firm understanding of how they operate, you know, say in Dr. Phillips or Windermere, Winter Garden, okay? We as a community and as a municipality have taken on the responsibility to fund the operations of these things in regards to, you know, fertilization, lawn care, lights, anything to do with the fields in themselves, okay? The particular organization that utilizes these fields isn't paying anything to the city, they're just doing a service on behalf of the city, is from what I understand. So, I don't have any problem with that, but I think that it's important to make sure that these particular entities representing Ocoee since tax funded dollars are paying for them, should be non-for-profit or not-for-profit. If they are and they're within the IRS, you know, statute, then they're providing budgets, and then they can afford 10%, so it would be a way the Parks and Rec can actually receive funds. They would probably be able to generate $50,000 to $60,000 in revenue off of just two or three that I know of at 10%.
Give me the names.
You have the Ocoee Youth Soccer League, you have Bulldog Park, Bulldog Football, you have Ocoee Little League.
They do participate and help with funds. What they bring in, if anybody doesn't live in the city...
I was a treasurer, treasurer of one of these.
If they do not live in the city, they pay for persons that are not in the city. Now, you said nonprofit, if it's citizens, we let them use it, but if it's people on the team that are not in the city, they have to pay us, they pay money for those people.
Right, but the actual organization itself has to register with the IRS and uphold certain, for a nonprofit, so you're saying it's, you know, volunteers, it's nonprofit. Well, part of, part of being a not-for-profit or nonprofit, by registering with the IRS, they put certain restrictions on you. You also can get grants, there's ways that these programs could get grants to help also with offset some of the funding of the money we're spending at these places, but I don't want to get too long-winded. I can say though, that yes, there is an additional charge for an out-of-city individual in some programs, but not all, because some programs are based upon a particular district guideline that does not allow you to even participate in the program if you're not within the city limits anyway, so. I just think that it wouldn't be too much of a burden to ask any and all of them that receive these funds, you know, to help, it's 10%. I mean, most other, most other communities and municipalities are paying somewhere between 50 and 60% of the overall cost, and we're paying, they're paying these particular ones all throughout, not one particular, are actually giving a check to the Parks and Rec Department at all. I was a treasurer, so I know specifically, and I, and I, that's also why I know I think they could afford the 10%, that's the only reason I say that.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
No.
All right, one of the things in our health insurance, I will make a comment on the health insurance part. Our city went to the self-insured problem, the process years ago, and we save our taxpayers a lot of money through the self-insurance process. We might not do the health assessment for cigarettes or anything like that yet, but we've cut out, I think the first year was 800, 900,000, right? Rob?
Yeah.
I think the first year we saved citizens 800, 900,000, and over the last few years it's figured out, I think we just had an NLC meeting here not long ago, and we had saved probably plus to $8 million for citizens through our health insurance programs. So, we do do that. There's a process that we go through that happens, probably a lot of people don't know about it, but in one of them is the major one, I think, is the process through the self-insure. We run that through our own clinic where our employees and their family can go to that without having to go to a doctor and pay the doctor.
I'm aware of that, I think that's, I applaud and commend you guys on that. I wasn't specifically speaking about that necessarily, the savings in that cost plan. I was speaking about there's a program where we pay all the co-pays and deductibles on top of this.
That's, that is exactly why we went to the other program.
So you could pay them.
Where you don't have to pay the co-pays.
Oh, okay.
This is no co-pays.
Oh. So, the city doesn't pay for co-pays and deductibles? I must have been misunderstanding that.
But remember too, is that when, I think it was last year or the year before, we increased the co-pay, if you go to a...
No, we did. If they want to go to a doctor, they can go to a doctor, but our insurance is self-financed. We, like I said, in the process with our city staff and our city people, we have cut our health insurance budget in the last seven or eight years, or 10 years, probably roughly, I think, $7 to $8, $9 million.
That's the opposite of the normal...
Because it used to come, every year it used to average anywhere from 16 to 18% to, on an annual basis for insurance, and we've cut that.
And then, if you retire, you still, and you've been with the city for a certain amount of time, you're still vested with insurance as well, right?
Nope. They have to, they get to go to Cobra if they retire and they go before their age of 60-something, Gene can answer that, they go to what they call Cobra.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, they pay the full amount, the city no longer contributes any contribution for retirements. They get a group rate, but they're not allowed to, you know, the city doesn't contribute any part of it.
Are they allowed to use the facility for checkup?
They can still use that facility, but they do not get, they, like, instead of paying the annual, monthly 200 for a family, they pay 1,200, so it's a lot different.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to fill out the form out.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
All right. All right, anybody else? No further members of the public wishing to speak, I now close the public speaking portion of the meeting and call upon the city commission for any general comments, questions, or discussions. Or any amendments proposed in the budget. I guess what we have to figure out is the one thing on the 75, 75,000 on Malcolm Road, Rob, and then you have one other too.
Yeah, you still have $400,000 that you left in there from the last hearing also.
Which I was going to make a motion to remove that $400,000 from contingency.
Maybe only remove 375.
What's that?
You made a motion, right?
Yeah, I made a motion to remove the $400,000 that we put in contingency.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Keller to remove the 400,000 from the, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any more comments on that? No more comments, let's vote. Whoop.
Oh.
That's why I just closed it. Anybody in the public want to speak to that?
Do you have to do each individual one?
We can, we can do the amendments all together as once, or we can do them individually.
Because we have the Malcolm Road?
Well, yeah, I just figure one's to decrease, the others to increase, so we should at least take the money out.
Right, but I know we had to, do we have to open it up each time, or can we do them as a group?
Well, before we vote on any of them, we'll need to open it up for the party.
All right, anybody, nobody in the, probably want to speak to that, we'll go back, do it again. Motion by?
Commissioner Keller.
Commissioner Keller, propose for the 400,000. Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All right, anybody in the public want to speak to that issue? So, nobody does, all right, bring it back to the podium. No more comments, let's vote. Again. Any other amendments? And I know there's one more we talked about, is the process, Rob, do you want to bring that up?
Yeah.
How we going to try to handle it?
Yeah, as we're moving forward to handle the debris from the storm last week, we're going to need to take some money from reserves and move it into an account next year for debris removal, and that number, Bob, was...
It's a solid waste, and it's 402-534-005224, it's emergency management.
And what was the number we wanted to take from reserves? The total amount is probably going to be around 1.3 million to clean up everything from the storm. Part of that, about 25 to 30%, will be handled in this year's budget, and what we want to do is handle it with funds that we haven't spent in all the different departments, and we're looking at that right now, we'll bring forth an agenda item tomorrow night to clean that part of it up, and the remainder of the 1.3 million, we need to take out of reserves and put it in the correct account for next year. And you said we need...
900,000.
900 for next year. So, Mayor, what we need is a motion to take an additional $900,000 from reserves and put it into the 402 fund in solid waste. It won't affect the millage rate, that would remain the same.
Just to make a comment on that, the reserve, which we in this town have outstanding reserves because of what staff in the city has done, that's one of the major reasons you have the reserve is for this purpose of when you have disasters or storms or anything, where we can cover is the cost of the redo and revitalization of what we're doing, so I think it's a great thing. So, I hear, I need a motion for the...
Motion.
Second.
Rosemary, I mean, sorry, Commissioner Wilson.
No, Rosemary.
Commissioner Wilson, wait a minute, public. Can we do public here?
Oh.
Okay, all right, we're going to do the public here. Anybody in the public want to make any comments on the thing for...
Question from the city, I would come up.
Catch, come up here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Just give us your name and address this time.
Chris Adkins, 606 Ridgefield Avenue. I apologize, I didn't say that last time, Mayor. Mr. Frank had brought up the 402, I believe in regards to the funds that you needed, the 900,000, you wanted to switch into that account, is that correct, sir?
Yes.
That's the solid waste utility fund, is that right?
Solid waste.
Yeah, okay, exactly, okay. So, our proposed expenditures this year were $3.6 million, and our, and our income on that was 3.67. There's a $500,000 debt on that before this particular event, so now with this 900,000, it'll be a little bit over $1 million in debt on that particular fund, is that correct?
You're going to have to ask that question, because $900,000 doesn't really have anything to do with solid waste, it's money we're taking from reserves for the additional service of picking up all the debris out there.
You're putting them in...
It's just, for lack of somewhere better to put it, solid waste is going to administer the contract, so that's where we want to put that money. We could just as easily put it into a general government line item or something.
Yeah, I know, yeah, no, I was just noticing that from its income to its expenditure under the 402, there was already $500,000 difference.
I don't have that information in front of me.
I have it right here, sir, yes, sir.
Oh.
Rob, can you add?
I don't have.
That's the, that's the only reason I brought it up, because you had brought up the 402 stuff. So, what happens is in the budget, it'll tell you, it breaks down by division, 401, 402, 001, it lets you break down what specific things are in that particular division, what their cost is.
Are you talking about the revenues for fiscal year 18 for solid waste?
Yes, sir.
There's an interfund loan coming forward for that, as we discussed at the, at the August meeting, where we're going to bring something back to the commission later in October as a, to enhance our funding strategy for the solid waste fund.
Okay. I didn't know that, it was just from expenditure to an income, it was already showing a negative, so it was a concern by needing to supplement it already, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in the public? All right, close it, bring it back to the podium. Commissioner Wilson made a motion to take the...
900,000 from...
900,000 from reserves for next year's budget.
Solid, yes.
Do we need to mention the first part, the 300 and some of your...
No, we'll handle that tomorrow's meeting with an agenda item.
All right, second, second was John, seconded by Commissioner Grogan. Any more comments on that? If not, let's vote. Motion carries unanimously.
How soon can we get that going?
Tomorrow.
I knew that, but it's like, you know, please let the folks know, tomorrow's the start, right?
All right.
What? Wednesday.
I thought tomorrow, I think it's Tuesday, Wednesday, that's correct.
Any other amendments?
Is that...
Did we want to do something with Malcolm Road?
Malcolm Road, are we going to touch?
That, Rob was figuring that out too.
Yeah, you can, you...
Here. Go ahead.
The, Malcolm, if you put it in, it'll raise the current millage rate by about .03.
So, what will it go to?
5.65.
5.65, that's fine.
That's correct, right, Bob?
5.6546 with the addition.
And what is this year?
5.8291 this year.
5.8291.
Talking about the current rate.
I just want to make a clearance again, the budget was 5.8291 last year, we're dropping it to 5.6546. That is a decrease. I will say, no matter, you read that stuff in the Sentinel and the tax appraiser, they go by the highest thing to say that, because what we have to do, that's why it's always in the paper, once again, the Sentinel puts it in the paper that we're all, we're one of the ones raising the tax base, so. All right. Did we buzz on that yet?
I'll make a motion that we had...
Wait, 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 what about Mal, I mean...
Well, it's talking about Malcolm.
Yeah, no.
Malcolm.
Do we want, I mean, is that what we want to do?
I, I think so.
I tend to think, I think Joel was thinking, I'm guessing you're the one that brought, started out with the Malcolm Road.
What do you want to do, Joel?
Commissioner Keller. Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna do the 75,000 for Malcolm.
Yeah, I'm...
Enter the budget.
Put it in the budget, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Motion made by Commissioner Keller to increase that to the 5.6546. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilson.
And that's included, that's just someone else.
Once again, I got to go back for the public. The two of you that's here, I'm going to bring it back. So, do you have any questions or anything on that? If not, we'll bring it back to the podium, the motion was made by Commissioner Keller, motion made by Commissioner Wilson, second. Any more discussion up here?
Just so everyone knows, that was 75,000 for the Malcolm Road resurfacing.
Right.
Correct.
All right, you got that?
Thank you.
All right, let's vote. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, motion carries unanimously. All right. I will now open this meeting for any members of the general public to speak or ask questions with respect to the motions to amend the proposed tentative budget, which, Mr. Dean, where you at now? Go down to D.
It's in there to D.
All right. I now ask the Director of Finance to publicly announce the recomputed proposed final millage rate and the perfect, I mean, the percent by which the recomputed proposed final millage rate exceeds the rollback rate. This is the proposed percentage increase in property taxes.
Mayor, the new ad valorem rate based on the amendments is 5.6546 mills, and this represents a 4.03% increase over the...
Millage.
Tentative rate.
Thank you.
Rollback rate, excuse me.
Rollback rate. All right, we need adoption of the final millage rate. We will now consider adoption of the final millage rate by ordinance. Prior to voting on the final millage rate, I will have the city attorney summarize and read the title of the final millage rate ordinance.
All right, the name of the taxing authority is the city of Ocoee, the rollback millage rate is 5.4357 mills, the percentage by which the proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate is 4.03%. The millage rate proposed by the ordinance is 5.6546 mills. This is an ordinance of the city of Ocoee, Florida, establishing a final millage rate of 5.6546 mills for ad valorem taxes for the city of Ocoee for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, providing for millage adjustments, providing for collection of taxes, providing for 4.03% in millage rate over the rollback rate, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
All right. All right. All right, I will now open this meeting for any members of the general public to speak or ask questions with respect to the proposed final millage rate. Anybody in the public want to speak to the final millage rate? All righty. See, no further members of the public wishing to speak, I now close this public speaking portion of the meeting, and call upon the City Commission for any further comments, questions, or discussion with respect to the proposed final millage rate. More discussions, all right, this time we'll ask, we'll accept a motion on the final millage rate ordinance.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance number 2017-022, setting the final millage rate at 5.6546 mils for fiscal year 2017-18.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a, motion has been made and seconded on the adoption of ordinance by Commissioner Keller and Wilson, 2017-022, all right, let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will now consider adoption of the final budget by ordinance. Prior to voting on the final budget, I will have the city attorney read the title of the final budget ordinance.
This is an ordinance of the city of Ocoee, Orange County, Florida, adopting a final budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
All right, I will now open, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me see, I will now open this meeting for any members of the general public to speak or ask questions with respect to the final budget.
Okay.
No questions again? We love that kind of public. All right, see, no further members of the public wishing to speak, I now close this last public speaking portion of the meeting, and call upon the City Commission for any further comments, questions, or discussion with respect to the final budget. No questions, all right. At this time, I will accept a motion on the final budget ordinance.
I'll take, I make that motion, I guess, should I read this?
Yeah.
To move, adopt ordinance number 2017-20, 023, approving a final budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018.
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Grogan to adopt ordinance number 2017-023, approving it in the final budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018. A motion has been made and seconded on the adoption of ordinance, let's vote.
Do it right after this.
All right, great, great job, I just want to...
Mayor, I have one point of clarification, if we may, we're proposing a 3% increase for the general staff at the city, we'd like to make that effective the first full peril in October as opposed to October 1st. It's the same thing we did this year for...
All right.
That's the way it was calculated, correct, Bob?
Pardon me?
That's the way it was calculated in the budget, so we just wanted to clarify. I'd ask you to turn...
No, I think, I think just by consent, it doesn't change any of the numbers.
No. Consensus is okay, everybody?
Yep.
Great. All right, before we adjourn, we fixed to adjourn, I just want to make a couple of comments, but I'm going, any commissioners that can make comments first, about anything about the budget or anything else, so, anybody got any comments?
I just want to thank the staff for all their hard work they've done, they made it very easy for us this year. Yeah, I'm going to second those comments, that was, fantastic job, staff, I really appreciate all the hard work you do putting into this budget to help us get it to where it is today, so thank you very much.
I agree, and I also like, you know, we've come a long ways on this commission, it seems like we're pretty much all in the same direction, looking at forward where we're going with the city, and so I appreciate, besides the staff, I also appreciate the other commission members, for us all focusing on what is best for the city, and doing that with the budget is very important, because that's the only way we're going to move forward.
I'll just echo that, when you do it right, it makes it easy, and I'm proud of all the departments, really, you did a fine job putting your budget plans together this year, made it easy for us.
In the process of the budget process, over the years, I've watched what we've accomplished and what we've done, it, I will tell you, as a mayor that's sat here over a long time doing the budget, it's been a pleasure working with the staff, a pleasure working with the commissioners, and believe it or not, even the citizens, if citizens was here, we could explain to you, tell you that, I think the city is a great place to be and a great situation with what we do with our finances. I know it's great to have somebody come here and ask questions, there's nothing wrong with asking questions, and if some of the things you don't get answers to, if you'll come back, we can sit down in the office and bring in the people that handle that department, we can go over those things with you, Mr. Atkins, and go over the things to get further questions. There's never any way we want anybody not to think that we're open to questions or not to do. I think our staff, once again, during this period of time, in the last week, they have expertly shown their abilities to do their work and do the things in this city. Our emergency one group, people, police, fire, and our staff has been excellent in working with the city to get things done, and citizens, you asked about different things we do in our budget, the 1.3 million has to come out of somewhere, there's not a budget. You think ad valorem, when you talk about ad valorem paying for things in this city, ad valorem tax couldn't pay to operate this city, it helps support operating this city, but it will not support what has to happen in the city. It takes way more than what we get off taxes. A lot of homes don't pass a lot of money on taxes, but they're still part of the city in what purpose they do, what part they pay, to me is a great thing.